If they weren't told, it should be just a question.
I know. Okay, we are going to start the meeting. This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 26th. It's 7:02 PM. The, before we start, if you have a cellphone, if you could put it on silent or vibrate, we would appreciate that. Our first item is the, after the call order, which is the opening of the meeting. We will do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I will start out with the invocation, if we could rise, please. Yesterday, at the Airport Commission meeting, I was advised that Dr. Stephen Beaker, who this county board had appointed several times to the Airport Commission, had passed away. He served on the Airport Commission from 1984 to 1990, also from 1997 to 2008, and also served as chairman for the 2005-2006 year. So if we may have a moment of silence for the family and a dedication for Dr. Stephen Thank you. You'll now start with a pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call attendance, please.
Commissioner Fleese.
President.
Gillman.
Here.
Henchel.
Here.
Lemco.
Here.
Max Bauer.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Wheelack.
Yes, ma'am.
Enman.
Here.
All right. Next item is the approval of minutes. We have three minutes to approve. Going back to those minutes, we did have a number of members that were excused from those meetings. September 21st, I was excused. On the 28th, Commissioner Fleese, Commissioner Wheelack was excused. And on the 28th regular scheduled meeting, Commissioner Fleese was excused. So let's take those in separate orders so they have an opportunity of abstain if they wish to because they did not attend that meeting. So the first one would be the approval of September 21st special session budget meeting. Moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Fleese to approve that. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gillman.
Yes.
Henchel.
Yes.
Lemco.
Yes.
Max Bauer.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yep.
Wheelack.
Yes, ma'am.
Fleese.
Yes.
Enman.
Yes. Oh, excuse me, abstain, I'm sorry. And then the next set of minutes is the special session board budget meeting for September 28th. Commissioner Fleese and Commissioner Wheelack were not, were excused from that, so we wouldn't, we need a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lemco, seconded by Commissioner Gillman. Is there discussion on the minutes? Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Henchel.
Yes.
Lemco.
Yes.
Max Bauer.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yep.
Wheelack.
Yes, ma'am.
Fleese.
Abstain.
I abstain too, please, I'm sorry.
I'm reading, I'm reading the next one.
Gillman.
Yes.
Enman.
Yes.
Those passed. The next one is the September.
Three o'clock meetings followed by the seven o'clock meetings.
The next meeting, but the next set of minutes is the September 28th regular session of the board, and Commissioner Fleese was excused, so we need a motion to approve those minutes. So moved, moved by Commissioner Wheelack, seconded by Commissioner Henchel. Discussion on those minutes? All right, we'll have a roll call vote on that, too.
Lemco.
Yes.
Max Bauer.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yep.
Wheelack.
Yes, ma'am.
Fleese.
Abstain.
Gillman.
Yes.
Henchel.
Yes.
Enman.
Yes. Okay, those minutes stand approved. Next item on our agenda is the first public comment, and there's also a public comment towards the latter part of our meeting. And I, as in the past, attempt to be flexible for items that have been pulled from the consent calendar or appear later in the agenda. If you, you'll have to give me some indication that you would like to talk about those matters at that time, or you can talk about them right now during public comment. So the clerk will read the rules regarding public comment.
Any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. One, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. Two, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Okay, you've heard the rules for public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will close public comment. We will move on to the approval of the agenda. Before we take a motion, the county administrator, Dennis Loia, has an item he'd like to have the board consider adding to the administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Monday morning, the Board of Public Works approved the initiation of the process to transfer the Resource Recovery Department responsibility from the Board of Public Works to the county board. And so Scott Howard prepared the appropriate ordinances that would begin a 45-day public process. And so I'd like you to, or ask your consideration to allow that to be on the agenda solely for the purpose of starting the public process, and then you'd, you'd consider it 45 days from now, if that's, if we could put that on the agenda.
Under your, under your section, Dennis?
I would recommend it be added to my section, yes.
That'd be item number five.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda with the addition of item number five to the administrators' report. Reference the Resource Recovery Council.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Wheelack, seconded by Commissioner Henchel to add item number five, Resource Management, agenda item under administrators' report. Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Max Bauer.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yep.
Wheelack.
Yes, ma'am.
Fleese.
Yes.
Gillman.
Yes.
Henchel.
Yes.
Lemco.
Yes.
Enman.
Yes. Okay, we have an agenda. Next item, special orders of business. We have none this evening. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we will move on to the action of the consent calendar. Just a brief explanation. County Commission meets as a committee of the whole on Wednesday evening for the first three Wednesdays of the month, and it makes recommendations to the full Board of Commissioners, and then that's what is addressed on the consent calendar. So it does give the public some time and notice as to what the preliminary recommendation of the board is, and it allows for further discussion. So with that, the clerk will read the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Receive and file. Number one, email regarding Class 1 industrial waste issue. Number two, City of Traverse City letter of October 10th, 2011. Number three, Clement Rose letter of October 17th, 2011. Number four, resolution supporting Employee Freedom to Work Act, Wexford County. Number five, Department of Human Services minutes of July 29th. Number six, Area Agency on Aging minutes of August 4th. Number seven, Local Emergency Management Commission minutes of August 11th. Number eight, Boardman River Dam's Implementation Team minutes of August 18th. Number nine, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency minutes of August 18th. Number 10, Board of Public Works minutes of August 22nd. Number 11, Airport Commission minutes of August 23rd. Number 12, Department of Human Services minutes of August 26th. Number 13, Resource Recovery Council minutes of September 1st. Number 14, Central Dispatch Policy Board minutes of September 8th. Number 15, Local Planning Team minutes of September 8th. Number 16, Airport Commission Special Minutes of September 12th. Referrals, none. Approvals, Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Number 17, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office surplus vehicles. Number 18, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office surplus mobile data terminals. Number 19, Commission on Aging Acceptance of Donation. Number 20, Provision of Sheriff's Office Services to the Village of Kingsley. Number 21, Personal Emergency Response Unit Contract 2012 to 2014. Resource Management and Administration Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Number 22, Clean Sweep Grant Fiscal Year 2012. Number 23, LED Lighting and Energy Efficiency Improvement Grant. Number 24, 2011-2012 Victim Rights Agreement. Number 25, Michigan Drug Court Grant Funding, 86th District Court. Number 26, Mental Health Court Continuation Grant. Number 27, Approval to Extend Landfill Surcharge. Number 28, Appointment of Interim Equalization Director. Number 29, 2012 Employee Health Insurance Recommendation. Number 30, 2012 Employee Dental Life and Disability Insurance Recommendation for 2012. Number 31, Residential Portion of the Equalization Studies. Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Number 32, 2012 Budget Adoption and General Appropriation Act. Number 33, Comprehensive Planning, Budgeting, and Contracting Agreement for Fiscal Year 2011. Number 34, Enhanced 911 Legislation Compliance. Number 35, Budget Adjustments.
Okay, the clerk has read the consent calendar. These are preliminary recommendations to the board for consideration this evening. Does any member of the public wish to have any of the items described in the consent calendar pulled for a separate discussion? Okay, we will now go to the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Henchel.
Item 27, please.
You're, you're reading Commissioner Wheelack's mind.
I'm reading my notes.
I will pull item number 29 and 30, based on the recommendation of our civil council, Cooney, about Cooney to abstain on those two items and call for a roll call vote for item 29 and 30. Commissioner Richardson. Any other items to be pulled? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of items 27, 29, 30, and 32.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Wheelack, seconded by Commissioner Henchel to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item 27, 29, 30, and 32. And before we go for the roll call vote, does the, would the board consent to have the chairman have item number 32 as J number three?
I don't know. I'll make that motion.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion, I just need to, just a consent. All right, okay, then we'll do that. That'll be item number 32. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yep.
Wheelack.
Yes, ma'am.
Fleese.
Yes.
Gillman.
Yes.
Henchel.
Yes.
Lemco.
Yep.
Max Bauer.
Yes.
Enman.
Yes. Consent calendar passes. We now move on to the administrators' report. Dennis, you have the floor, item number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item, item number one is the recommended 2011 apportionment report. We passed this out to you last week. Under the law, the apportionment report, which sets the tax rates, preliminary tax rates, has to be adopted during the October annual meeting, and so we're recommending approval of this apportionment report, apportionment report prepared by Lori Spencer.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the apportionment report as provided.
All right, moved by Commissioner Wheelack, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to approve the 2011 apportionment report as presented. Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yep.
Wheelack.
Yes, ma'am.
Fleese.
Yes.
Gillman.
Yes.
Henchel.
Yes.
Lemco.
Yes.
Max Bauer.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Enman.
Yes. Motion passed. Second item is the septic treatment plant information. Dennis or Dean, do you want to start out with that information? And then we will go to discussion.
Well, let me start by saying that at the request, or at the direction of the board, this was added to the agenda for this week. We've included a copy of the resolution that was adopted by the county board on November 23rd of 2010. Chairman Enman has invited the supervisors of the five guaranteeing townships, and I think several of them are here present tonight. And now what I'll do is I'll turn this over to Dean and let Dean give a brief explanation of the financial status of the plant and how that relates to deficit plans.
In your board packet, you do have some financial information for our septic treatment fund that is obviously not at the end of the year, but it's current information as of October 13th, 2011. What we're primarily concerned with here is the bond payments that are due at the end of October. And once those bond payments are made, we'll actually have a cash deficit in this fund. And that has been something that we've had to deal with since we've, you know, opened this plant. And I want to explain before I go too far with this, there's a difference between a cash deficit and an operating deficit. The cash deficit simply means that the cash account, and this is on page, I'm not sure what your page is.
10.
Page 10. When you look at the trial balance, it's the first account, the 001.00 cash account. On this trial balance, it shows a balance of $351,000. When we make the debt service payment, which is due the end of the month, the debt service total's $469,000, and that will cause the cash account to go negative. And we're projecting that the cash balance will remain negative for the balance of 2011 because the operations will not cover or make up that difference. That is a cash deficit. That is not an operating deficit, which the state is mostly concerned with, and an operating deficit, which is not the same thing as a cash deficit, looks at the revenues compared to the expenditures in the fund. For 2011, we will end the year with a positive operating deficit, or we will not have an operating deficit because the revenues in the fund will be greater than the expenditures. So our concern for the balance of 2011 is that cash deficit that we'll have in the fund. I, I can't tell you at this time what that cash deficit will be, but I can tell you that we will not have an operating deficit, and we will not have to submit a plan to the state as to how that operating deficit will be addressed. It's, we're primarily concerned with the cash deficit once the bond payment is made at the end of this month.
So that's primarily the result of the money that was brought in from the settlement agreement. That's the reason there is not a operating deficit.
And you can.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Dennis. And you can see that when you look at the revenue control and the expenditure control totals here, they're summarizing all of the revenue in the fund and all of the expenditures. And we currently have about a $700,000 favorable variance there. You know, we'll have additional revenues and additional expenditures, but we will have an excess of revenue over expenditures when we close the books in 2011.
So if I could clarify what I believe to be Commissioner Max Bauer's question, is that we have in place a Resolution 26-2-2010 that sets up a split between 50-50 on the deficit, 50% us, and then the talent, the five townships split the 50% based on their percentage of ownership. And if I may, I believe her question was, is this resolution applicable for the 2011 year? And what I'm gathering from you is, is that since we, since we won't have a negative operating deficit, the Board of Commissioners can move forward with the, the stipulations under the resolution and move forward with a loan if it chooses to do so. But, and then, and we would just take care of the cash deficit because it didn't have an operating deficit. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, clarify this. I think you have a resolution in place that dictates what action we should take. The treasurer has a responsibility to take care of any deficits. Under your current resolution, you're directing us to reimburse or to pay 50% of whatever shortfall exists. And if the board takes no action, that's exactly what we will do. So I guess that clarifies it. But you will not be creating a situation where you have, where we have to file a deficit plan. On the other side of the coin, I think to give full disclosure on this, Dean and I are in total agreement that there is no question that there's still a fundamental issue here of, of funding for this program.
Correct.
And that we certainly believe that in 2013, there will be an operating deficit that will require some other mechanism to address the issue.
2013 or 2012?
Be 2012.
At the end of 2012, for the, you know, in 2013 is when we address it.
Can you clarify the, the callable date on the first bond, the larger bond?
October, no, November 1st.
November 1st.
Of next year.
Of 2012.
That's correct.
And that's when we can take a look at the possibility of the interest rate and the possibility of an extended term.
Calling it, paying it down.
Refunding it.
Refunding it, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. So Commissioner Max Bauer, you have the floor.
My concern was that we take a look at this resolution and ask whether or not it is indeed structured where someone reading this would consider our agreement to be a loan agreement. And I'm going to quote what Scott Howard said at the Board of Public Works meeting. Scott, and I got a video, a little DVD player of the meeting, and went over it this afternoon. And Scott Howard, well, first of all, Mike Gillman asked if the G5 townships who signed on to their obligation will meet that obligation, or will they go to the county? And there really wasn't an answer. Scott Howard then went on to say that the county can do a loan agreement that isn't really a loan as long as there is no guarantee of repayment to the county. And then Chuck Korn said, "The county can commit funds without the expectation that they will be paid back." And Scott Howard agreed and said, "Right." Scott then went on to say that the G5 is in a little different situation, and that the payment has to be paid back one way or the other. The county is not in that position. And, you know, I just want to be comfortable that this resolution is not interpreted by the state of Michigan or an auditor that we're loaning money and that that's in violation of the law. I mean, that's all I want to hear, is that that, that this resolution is not going to be interpreted in that way. Please.
Dean. You, you are correct. I mean, Dennis, when we're looking at this, we should clean up the, the language in this resolution because we, we want to be clear that what we're doing is simply covering a cash deficit. If we loan money to the septic treatment plant, we want, there, there are two, there, there are a number of concerns with, with the way this resolution is worded. Number one, it's a short-term cash advance. That's what we're doing. We're not loaning money to cover an operating deficit because Commissioner Max Bauer is correct. That, that wouldn't fly with the state of Michigan. If there is an operating deficit, the, the county and the townships have to appropriate money to that operation with no expectation that it's going to be repaid. We're, we're fortunate in that we don't have that issue for 2011, but as Dennis indicated in 2012, that is an issue because a cash advance with an expectation from either the G5 or the county that that will be repaid does not, in effect, it's not revenue. It's simply cash to cover a cash deficit.
So my question is, do we need to rescind this resolution?
I think that in looking this resolution over, whether you rescind it or you modify it, I think this resolution would be more succinct and appropriate if in the second paragraph, after the word "funding," it said "cash deficits." So that would eliminate operating deficits, which is the problem with the state. In the third paragraph, after the word "short," there will be a short, it should say, "short-term advance," because that's what it is. It's not a loan, it's a short-term advance. And then in looking this over quickly, in the very last, now therefore be resolved paragraph, again, after 50-50 split of funding, it should say "cash deficits."
Correct.
And with that change, it'll be very specific that what you're talking about is only cash deficits in an operating deficit situation, which the state does not allow you to.
Correct.
Loan money, you will, some other remedy will have to take place.
And, so I would like to have us have a reworded resolution that we can fix this.
I think, and just a suggestion, and Bob may want to chime in on this, I would think if the board wanted, it would be, it would be appropriate and acceptable to make a motion to replace Resolution 26-2-2010 with a new resolution stating those three changes that I made. Would that work, Bob?
I would agree with that.
I will make that motion.
All right, so it's been moved by Commissioner Max Bauer, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, Richard Thomas. To create a new resolution with the changes indicated by the county administrator.
Displacing the old resolution.
Yes. Commissioner Wheelack.
Does, does this resolution have to be in place for the, it doesn't have to be in place to make the 2011 payment.
No, I think we know the intent of the resolution, but I think to make the change will, as Commissioner Max Bauer indicated, clarify that this can only be used at cash deficits.
Okay. Any other, Commissioner Gillman.
Could, is there a way that before we, we, I mean, I'd like to see it in front of me. I know that you explained it, and I could, I, you know, trying to take, take the notes at least mentally, trying to keep up with it. I mean, before I vote for a replacement, though, I'd like to see the replacement. So could we have it presented to us next month so that we could actually see what we're going to be voting on, instead of just, this is going to be changed in these ways?
I'm, I'm pretty clear on the word "changes" in the resolution. If you want to go over that again, Dennis, what is the, what's the, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Do the motion, does the motion maker feel comfortable with just the three-word changes that Dennis has indicated in the resolution?
Yeah.
I mean, I do. Okay. All right, further discussion, Commissioner Henchel and then Commissioner Richardson.
Dennis, or Dean, what is, what are the amounts of these advances?
Let's talk about what last year's was. We'll tell you in just a second. Do you remember last year's?
Last, last year's cash advance was $428,000 approximately. This year, we're projecting it to be less than that. If I had the, I had provided a projection at Ways and Means, and I believe we're looking at $265,000 to $300,000 at the end of 2011. at $265,000 to $300,000 at the end of 2011.
So we're advancing a quarter to a half a million dollars based on what could be interpreted as a gentleman's handshake. I'd really like to see the resolution in writing before I approve it. Just, I think that's the responsible thing to do, and I think it's actually protocol of the Board if it's a resolution to be presented in writing.
Well, let me clarify. The actual deficit will be fixed without Board action. It's the county treasurer's purview and we will not run a deficit in the fund. So I guarantee you, on November 2nd, after the bond payment is made, money will be placed in this fund to make it whole. It's then a matter of how, and that will be county dollars. It's then simply a matter of whether you seek to get 50% of that back or some percent of that back from the townships, the guaranteeing townships, or whether it's paid for by the county.
Is there some timing issue where we have to have this done tonight?
No, it really makes no difference whether you do it tonight or next month.
So we could do it next month.
Because Bill is going to.
Without missing a beat.
Take care of the deficit anyway.
That was my point earlier.
And typically, as this last year, we don't, we've, we've had an agreement, although not stated in the resolution, that we wait till we close out the year. And once Dean closes out the year and knows the exact deficit, that's when we ask for repayment of half the money. So this won't actually take place until January or February in all likelihood by, you know, by some reimbursement of the townships.
All right, Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, I share Commissioner Gilman's concerns as well. And it's not clear to me, is the motion to redraft this or is the motion to change it right now, you know, per force? Because it seems that maybe the motion should be to redraft it and then bring it back and then we can, I mean, I didn't vote for this the first time, so.
Since Commissioner Max Bauer made the motion, go ahead.
I certainly am willing to change my motion to redraft the resolution, and I didn't vote for it the first time either. And it is unlikely I will vote for it a second time, but I just want to be sure that if we've got a resolution, that it is not misinterpreted by the state of Michigan and we commit funds that we don't have.
Commissioner Limcoul.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the township supervisors if they're comfortable with this resolution and what their feelings are about it.
Okay.
And also, I questioned, you know, the protocol and the process here because I'm not sure that we've ever brought a resolution and changed the resolution on that night. It hasn't gone through the committee process.
Okay.
So I think that we ought to let it come through the committee process to be able to brought, to go through this to be able to make sure it's done right.
That's fine.
But I'd like to hear what the supervisors feel too.
Okay. We saw a motion on the floor. I want to get further discussion from Commissioners. Commissioner Wheelock.
Well, I think that was the point I was trying to make earlier. This, this resolution doesn't have to pass tonight for 2011 bond payment. We have the 2011 bond payment will be made.
Absolutely.
So.
All right. Okay, if the Board would allow, I could open up discussion with the supervisors that are available here.
Yep.
Okay. Supervised, the five guaranteeing supervisors, if you'd like to come up and make your remarks about your feeling about moving forward with.
Like the Three Musketeers to me.
And when you do speak, if you could introduce yourself and then pull the microphone to your, closer to your vocal cords.
Okay, Glenn Lyle, Supervisor East Bay Township. I guess I came here tonight, I'd watched the meeting from last week and I was a little taken back. We've been down this road for seven years and we're not really getting anywhere. I think it's time that we all pull together. I mean, this plan, regardless of how we got here, forget all the rest of stuff, we've been down that road. It's time everybody come together and figure out a way to work together and be able to get this thing through for the community. This isn't for any of us individually, this for the community. And I went back in March 30th meeting, Board of Commissioners meeting, and listened to it. And it's a blessing to have these recorded so you can do that because memory being what it is anymore. But there was a statement made by Commissioner Enman that I just want to bring back up. I won't talk about the shortfall in the settlement, but it said, "We, we all had our hands in this. We agreed to move forward as partners." And I guess that's what I'm asking. I know my two Commissioners from East Bay Township. Commissioner Henschel, I, I'm not sure where you're at with this thing. You're supposed to be representing your constituents. The majority of your constituents are on septic tanks or holding tanks. Apparently, maybe they've been calling you and said, "Don't worry about it" or "Don't do it," but I don't believe that. Commissioner Gilman, you've only got one little part of East Bay Township, but you got the peninsula. And the peninsula's a lot of septic tank and holding tanks. I mean, I guess I'm asking you guys, take a look, are we doing or are we voting against this thing for personal reasons or is our constituents told us that's what they wanted? Thank you.
All right. Mr. Corn, any comments, if you could speak to the microphone.
Supervisor Corn.
Thank you.
I have no problem with a resolution next month.
Okay.
Or this month. I'm, I'm still committed towards finding a long-term solution. And I think my lunch partner the other day summed it up nicely when he said, "We didn't land on this tank, it landed on us."
Supervisor Collater.
Wayne Collater, Supervisor Acme Township. You know, when I took over and became Supervisor of Acme Township, this problem was already existing. Glenn Lyle was Chairman of the Board of Public Works. And the city and the township, or the county and the G5, we're all working hard to get this resolved. We still are. It's a mess, but we're going to get through it. Acme Township realizes that it's going to have to put up money. We've actually got money set aside when it becomes our turn. But we also understand, and we were in this together, we appreciate the partnership that we've had with the county and at one point with the city, and we hope that that continues. So I have no problem waiting for a month, but I really believe that the partnership that we have and the agreement that you have before us needs to be executed as long as it can, as long as there's a operational ability to do that. Thank you.
All right, okay. So motion maker, do you wish to change your motion or rescind or withdraw your motion?
I did change my motion to ask for a draft of a new resolution.
To come back to the next.
To come back.
To the next RMA meeting?
To come back to RMA in November.
Yes.
Okay. And does the second agree with that?
Sure.
All right, we will vote on.
Actually, you should probably ask for other, since this is public comment.
Okay, sure.
In case anyone else.
Anybody else have any comments regarding this topic?
Thank you, Supervisors.
All right. Since we have an, technically, we have an amended motion. Does everybody want to vote on the amendment or do you want to just vote on it as a straight motion?
Straight motion.
All right, just so everybody understands that procedurally. All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I do have a question.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Do we have to, at, at our next meeting, do we have to rescind that, the motion that we have and then pass a new one?
You mean the resolution passed?
The resolution, yes, thank you. I didn't say that, I meant it.
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to refer this item back to next month's RMA meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right. Thank you, everyone. That concludes, I believe, does that conclude the septic treatment discussion?
I think so.
Kirk? Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks, thank you Supervisors for coming. We will move on to the Health Department update.
This will be brief. We've had two meetings so far with the Health Department staff, County Treasurer, and Dean Bott and myself to look at the financing options and see what could be done. We have also sent your questions on the geothermal option and the roof to the architect and the engineer seeking answers to those questions. Right now, we're working through the finances and I will just say that at this point, in order to make this work, we're going to have to be creative. We are looking at several options of refunding other bonds that we have to free up money to help pay this. We're talking to the Health Department about contributing money from their fund balance to assist in this. And we have another meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30. Our intention is to bring you a, an answer next week at Public Health and Safety on whether or not we can afford to do this or not and what implications will be of adding additional costs such as the geothermal cost or the, or the stainless, or the steel roof. So we're working on it. We don't have a conclusion yet. We're still crunching numbers.
Okay. Any other questions for the Minister? Commissioner Wheelock.
Dennis, one of the discussions that we had a long time ago when we first started talking about a remodel of the current Health Department building was a long-term commitment contract from Dental Clinics North.
Yep.
Do we, did we get that in place?
Yep, well, we don't have the contract yet because it's going to be determined based on price and decision on how we'll finance. But there has been one change to that. Dental Clinics North has now indicated through the Northern Michigan Health Department that they may fund, they may, they may not look for the county to finance the equipment purchase, that they may be willing to do that themselves, which drops $550,000 to $600,000 off the bond issue. But yes, they are still willing to do either a 20-year lease agreement or two 10-year lease agreements.
Because at the point that we were talking about, and I understand that the remodel is significantly less than the new building.
That's correct.
But, but at that point, you know, the 20-year commitment from them almost made the payment.
Well, yeah, clearly. We told you, we had, we had financing in place to do the remodel. But when, but when the Board decided to go with the new building and the price went up by, you know, a million and a half dollars, that changed the situation considerably.
But I just wanted to make sure that we had that contract in place and we hadn't forgot that.
No.
That piece of the funding.
No.
Because I think that's a significant piece of the funding.
And just so you know, fundamentally, here, here's the issue. The Health Department and clinics, Dental Clinics North will bring in enough money to pay for the bond issue. I can tell you that right now. There, there will be enough revenue to pay for the bond issue. The problem is, is that the revenue that's currently being brought in by Health helps offset the general fund expense. So last, I'll just leave it at this, we're, we have about $170,000 hole right now. Don't get overly excited about that because we are closing that gap significantly by some of the things we're doing with the County Treasurer. Whether or not we can get that gap down to nothing where the county won't have to put any money into this project, that's our goal. That's where we're trying to get. But, you know, we may come back to you and say, "We've got this down through a number of mechanisms to where the only way this project works is a $50,000 annual infusion from the County Board." You know, or 75, you know, I have no idea yet. But our goal will be to bring you a proposal that will not require any additional county money. I just, I don't know that we're going to be able to. Okay?
All right.
So, and I, and I'll just tell you that with the letters we've gotten back from the engineers and the architects still both indicate that geothermal is not going to be cost-effective to do and that the steel roof is still $170,000 more. And the shingle roof, while maybe not what it used to be, is 40-year shingle. So they're not recommending either of those. But we will give you how the, how, if you, if you decide you wanted to add those things, we'll show you what the cost will be. Right now, we're still going between a, we're going anywhere from a 15-year bond issue up to a 25-year bond issue. We're looking at all options in between. So hopefully, we'll have some, we will have some answers for you next week. I do want to tell you, this is interesting on geothermal. The estimated cost, no, the, the cost of operating our current building, the gas cost annually, is that this year's, was that this building's gas cost? Estimated at $1750 a year. So it's not very expensive under the new building, $1750 a year under the current proposal. So going to geothermal, you can see where the cost payback of it is really long-term. So that's, that's just what I know right now. That may all change in the next week. We're still talking to all those people, but what, you know, what, so where we're trying to go here is we're trying to figure out a way to refund an existing bond. For example, the Woodmere Bond issue that we did for building the new Sheriff's City Police Building, that bond issue expires in 2018. We spent $240,000 a year on that bond issue. So if we can figure, we're looking at ways that we might be able to refund that issue early because it's callable and how much money that might save, which would then reduce down the loss to the general fund. We're looking at every option that we can come up with to try to make this thing work and hopefully we'll be successful in that.
And in the last year, our County Treasurer's been very successful in reducing so.
Absolutely.
By calling bonds early.
And so we're, we're continuing to do that.
We're so fortunate to have the financial people that are in place that they're doing because they're, they're the best in the business.
Okay, any other questions for the County Administrator on the Health Department update? Any member of the public have any questions to the Administrator? An item. Okay. Moving on, we had the claim summary that has been signed off by the Claims Council.
I do have to explain that I did not get a chance to review this during the day and before the meeting. I remembered that we had one claim to Wheelock and Sons during the month. So I need to give you two amounts.
Okay.
And I'll start with the, the smaller number first. We had one claim, Wheelock and Sons for $250,000, and that would require separate approval. And I believe Commissioner Wheelock would want to abstain.
Right.
From that.
Does that come off the 16-6 of that?
I will, I will give you a revised number for the next vote.
All right. So let's have a motion on the Wheelock.
To approve some of.
Movement for 250. All right, moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Fleece to approve the payment to Commissioner, to Wheelock and Sons for 250. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Abstain, please.
Fleece?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Henschel?
Yes.
Limcoul?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Enman?
Yes. And the remaining?
A quick comment regarding the large immediate payment check run on October 12th. The $10,796,000 check run included $10,408,907, two checks to the state of Michigan for the SET tax that we collect. I thought you might want to know why that check run was so, so large. But the revised amount with the Wheelock and Sons claim reduced or backed out is $16,659,843.85.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson.
Move for approval.
Okay.
Support.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Fleece to approve the differential as presented by the Finance Officer. Is there discussion? Roll call vote on that, too.
Commissioner Fleece?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Henschel?
Yes.
Limcoul?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Enman?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to the Resource Management item that was added by the County Administrator.
This letter is being passed around to you. On October 24th, the Board of Public Works passed a motion unanimously to approve a resolution to adopt an amendment to Ordinance 17 to reorganize the reporting structure for the Resource Recovery Council and the Resource Recovery Department. That would be moving it from under the jurisdiction of the Board of Public Works to the County Board of Commissioners. The recommendation from Scott Howard, our attorney for the Board of Public Works and Bob Osterhout and myself, is that the Board of Commissioners accept consideration of the amendment and then set a final vote on adoption of the amendment for the December 28th, 2011 Board of Commissioners meeting and authorize staff and legal counsel to initiate the 45-day public comment period.
Okay, Commissioner Fleece.
I would move that we accept consideration of the amendment, set the final vote on the adoption of the amendment for December 28th, 2011, which is our regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and to authorize staff and legal counsel to initiate 45-day public comment period.
Okay, this is our second, seconded by Commissioner Wheelock. Discussion, Commissioner Wheelock.
Dennis, my only question in this regard is, a subcommittee has been formed of the Resource Recovery Council to redraft, if you will, Ordinance 17. As all of you are well aware, we are currently in the middle of a 90-day public inputs session for a complete rewrite of the solid waste ordinance. Ordinance 17 is the enforcement tool of that ordinance, of that solid waste plan. And in order to comply with the solid waste plan, Ordinance 17 needs significant changes And in order to comply with the solid waste plan, Ordinance 17 needs significant changes to match the update. So, I'm just curious if there's a reason to rush the 45-day public input process on this piece of it, when Ordinance 17 is going to require that 45-day public input when we do the complete rewrite. Is that right, Bob? When Ordinance 17 is completely redrafted, it's going to have to have that 45-day period. I'm wondering if there's a reason that we need to do this 45 days for this one little piece of this report, of this ordinance amendment? Because the ordinance amendments to Ordinance 17 will be significant.
I think the feeling of Bob Osterhout and Scott Howard, and I'll speak on their behalf since they're not present, was that because of the significant changes to Ordinance 17 that are going to be proposed, that that may come under greater scrutiny and may require greater time into next year before it passes the required 67% of the local municipalities. And so, they thought, in order to get this in place for the first of the year and make a clean change, that it made sense to try to do this now. Now, what I can answer for you, Commissioner, you raised a good point. I can answer for you the process that will be necessary in order to amend the proposed new ordinance to comply with this.
Well, I don't, because I don't believe that the Ordinance 17 is a county ordinance. I don't believe that has to be approved by two-thirds of the municipalities. The solid waste plan has to be approved, but Ordinance 17, I don't believe has to be approved by the local units. I could be wrong, but I don't believe that the county ordinance is.
There isn't anybody that knows more about this than you. I doubt you're wrong.
I've read it once or twice. But, I'm almost, I'm very sure that Ordinance 17 will be passed by this County Board and the Resource Recovery Council. It has no, you know, although local units have an opportunity to have input like they do in any public process, but they do not, the ordinance itself does not have to be approved by two-thirds of the units.
If you look at.
The solid waste plan has to be.
If you look at the second page of this document, it's the letter from Scott Howard and Ross Hammersley. And this talks about the process in the first paragraph of amending Ordinance Number 17. And if you go down to number four of that, excuse me, number five of that, it talks about the potential veto by a member unit representing 67% of the population, or accumulation of 67% of the population. So, I'm just going by what the BPW attorney says, and from my reading of this, it does require that.
I don't think it does, but we can get there. You know, anyway around it, Ordinance 17 needs significant rewrite, which we are in the process of doing.
So, you know, really, it's whatever the Board's comfortable with. We were just trying to make this change for the first of the year, and I think BPW was okay with that.
Right. And it absolutely makes sense to acknowledge the change, to have the Resource Recovery Department under the direction of the County Board of Commissioners, not under the Board of Public Works.
And then, I would assume what you'll do is, you'll incorporate that into the rewritten plan as well.
Absolutely. Well, it's already in the plan.
It is, okay.
It's in, and I think, did everyone get a copy of the revised plan? If not, we can make sure that you did. I thought everyone got that. That would be 2011-2 Amendment to the County Solid Waste Plan, so.
Commissioner Gilman?
I get a little confused by these things sometimes, so. If this is going to be, I mean, if this is going to be fundamentally changed, if Ordinance 17 is going to be fundamentally changed, and that's what we're looking at here, why wouldn't we wait to start the 45-day period until the point in which it's pretty sure what it's going to be? I mean, it doesn't.
In response to Dennis's comment, we want to have the change that designates that the Resource Recovery Council and the Resource Recovery Department is under the direct jurisdiction of the County Board of Commissioners. We want that in place for January 1. And depending on how long it takes us to rewrite Ordinance 17, we may not be able to get the 45-day public comment period in and get that finalized before January 1, 2012.
Okay, but there's a purpose for public comment, and there's a purpose for having the ability to speak up on any issue. So, if Christmas, the language is finalized, and we've done this to make it possible to make it happen, you know, as of the first of the year, then we've not done, we've done a disservice to the public, then, which may want to comment on the final.
Well, I think, well, this.
They'll have a second.
This action.
No, because you've got two actions here. See, and the first one, the one we made the motion on, is a recommendation by Scott Howard to move the authority of the.
Resource Recovery.
Resource Recovery Council to the County Board of Commissioners. Where presently, it's under the BPW. And the issue I think that you're talking about, or may be confused about, Ordinance 17 is totally a separate issue. Well, and if I could add, you know, it's not completely unlike we did with the solid waste plan. We brought you Amendment Number 1.
Right.
Which made the new facility being constructed and licensed by American Waste a use-by-right as it was designated, a designated facility. We brought you that amendment first, and then we finished the complete rewrite of the solid waste plan, and that's Amendment Number 2. But, we did, in fact, act on the First Amendment, which was able to move forward quickly, you know, and much better timing than anyone had ever dreamed we'd be able to make that happen. And, you know, for that purpose, it probably makes sense to do this, because it's very similar.
It's really a County Board decision. You know, this, the reason this is here before you is because you directed us to do it. In your strategic plan of 2010, you said you wanted to move Board of Public, or this department, under the County Board. And this March, you approved a direction to direct us to do this and to try to get it done. That's the only reason it's here. If you're more comfortable waiting till you do the whole Ordinance 17, that's totally fine.
I don't think for budgetary purposes.
My only concern is just a time thing.
Yeah. All right. I mean, is. Commissioner Gilman's got the floor now.
My only concern is the adequate time to respond, but if it's concurrent with some other things that are similar, I mean, so basically, we're looking at, we're talking the same language, but in two different places, then I think I can agree with that.
All right. Any other further comment on the motion? The motion is to move forward to approval of the reorganization of the reporting structure of the Resource Recovery Council and Resource Recovery Department to the Board of Commissioners. Does any member of the public have any comment regarding the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
That includes.
That includes the Administrator's report?
Yes, sir.
We will now go to items removed under the consent calendar. The first one was item number 27. Commissioner Henchel, you have the floor.
Thank you. As far as I can gather, from what I've been told, for a number of years, the Resource Recovery Council's been funded through a surcharge on landfills, which has been renewed every year. And this year, that was brought before us to basically make it permanent, using the words, "Until a better funding source could be found." You know, as I said before, one of my favorite Ronald Reagan quotes was that, "There's nothing quite so permanent as a temporary government program." I think the old method keeps this program accountable. And if it has not been able to find a way to fund itself thus far, I don't think rewarding it with a permanent appropriation is the answer. Having said that, I move to adopt a resolution approving to extend landfill surcharge, replacing the words, "Until an alternate funding source can be implemented," with the words, "For the 2012 budget year."
I didn't hear you.
He indicated on the first paragraph, the wordage, "Alternate funding source can be implemented." Remove that and put the 2012 fiscal funding year.
And in the last paragraph as well.
And in the last paragraph.
And that would also appear in the last one.
So, this is not a permanent funding source.
I second that. All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Henchel, seconded by Commissioner Gilman. Is there discussion on the amended resolutions? Commissioner Richardson?
I haven't even been on the Board three years yet, and I think this is at least the third, maybe the fourth time we've dealt with this issue. And, I mean, we can bring it up anytime, anybody wants to change it or whatever. I just, it's just a way to, you know, and we have, by the way, cut it in half in the time I've been here, in that period of less than three years. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Henchel, but it just seems that we're not doing any damage by just setting it there and leaving it there until we want to play with it again. I will be voting against the resolution.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Well, I suppose, I oppose the surcharge 20 years consecutively, so. It's pretty easy.
If you don't care about the language, huh?
Whether it's permanent or for 2012, it doesn't matter. I won't be supporting the resolution.
All right. Further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Thomas?
Ditto.
All right.
Ditto.
I've always been opposed to it.
All right. Okay. Commissioner Henchel, you have any further comments?
I'll further say that may God have mercy on the time when I think things are so bad that I vote in a new tax, and this, making a temporary tax a permanent tax is just about the same thing to me.
All right. Okay. I guess I don't have a problem with dealing with this on a year-to-year basis. It really doesn't bother me any. It's fine. So, any other further discussion on the motion that Commissioner Henchel made, seconded by Commissioner, was it Gilman?
Gilman.
Yes. To change the language to just 2012 funding year. All right. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gilman?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Limco?
No.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Richardson?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Wheelock?
Absolutely no.
Fleece?
Yes.
Enman?
Yes. Motion passes. With four may votes, five yes. All right. Moving on to item number 29. Someone would like to make a motion, I just need to abstain based on the advice of councilmen.
I'll make the motion. So, we adopt the 2012 Employee Health Insurance Recommendation.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Limco, seconded by Commissioner Fleece, to approve item number 29, this is the 2012 Employee Health Insurance Recommendation. Is there a board discussion? Any discussion from the public? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Henchel?
Yes.
Limco?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Enman?
Abstain. Motion passes. Item number 30, I just need to abstain from that, so I appreciate a motion from the floor. Moved by Commissioner Gilman, and seconded by Commissioner Fleece, to approve the 2012 Employee Dental Life Disability Insurance Recommendation for 2012. Roll call vote, please. Excuse me, does anybody in the audience have any questions? Commission? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Limco?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Enman?
Abstain. That motion passes. All right. We will now, and as you know, item number 32 was moved to item number 3, under unfinished business. So, we will start with unfinished business. And I had asked the Administrator at the last committee of the whole meeting for some additional information for the Board. One was an analysis of if we considered five buildings as secured, and secured building in terms of sensitivity, and the other five as general cleaning. What would be the impact financially? And he has completed that. And Dennis, if you could just indicate to the Board your analysis, that the savings would be, instead of what, 192, it was 62,000? Is that what I remember you telling me in your office?
Well, under unfinished business, the analysis was put together by the Facilities Department. It indicates that, based on their recommended staffing, that in order to continue to keep staff at the Hall of Justice, the Historic Court House, prosecuting attorney, Woodmere, and the Health Services Building, that, and then contract the remainder of the work, the cost to do that, to keep the custodians, would be 363, 122. And that does not include any performance bond. The cost, that would be the six custodians plus a custodial supervisor. The cost, if you decided just to keep six custodian and no supervisor, would be 314, 239. The cost for the same buildings, in the example of Porcelain Patrol, would be 232, 582. So, with the supervisors, that would mean you would need to return approximately $131,000 back into the budget in order to clean those, to maintain the six employees, plus the custodial supervisor. If you didn't keep the custodial supervisor, it's roughly $82,000.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding that analysis? Okay. And the second question was, could we find out by a survey, and I recognize that all counties did not complete the survey, but just to get a feel for the number of counties that contract out for custodial service versus the ones that don't?
So, of the counties, we did a blast all the counties. Of the counties that responded, 12 counties contract the work, 18 counties use employees, seven counties have a combination. This is in the handout that was, I think, sent to your homes and then passed out tonight. In terms of the townships, because the Commissioner asked us to look at the townships and villages, we have three that responded that use employees, four that contract, and one that does both.
Any questions on that data?
And I'll also point out, you had some questions about where else Porcelain Patrol.
Yes. And that was the third question I had, is if the vendor that we're looking at is Porcelain, have they had an experience in sensitive and secure areas?
And I think they all received a letter from Porcelain Patrol, and the principal of Porcelain Patrol is in the audience tonight, as he was last meeting, in case you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions on the letter of that item? Commissioner Fleece?
I have some questions of the principal.
Do you have any questions of the owner?
Yes.
Okay. Certainly, if you'd like to come up, you're not required to come up, if you'd like to come up and field some questions, that would be fine, if you can come up and get yourself introduced, and state your name and your company, and do the best you can for answering the Commissioner's questions. Commissioner Fleece, you have the floor?
Joe Seibert.
Joe Seibert. The location of our company, 726 Hastings, Traverse City, Michigan.
Commissioner Fleese?
Your last name, Joe?
Seibert.
Seibert.
S.E.Y.B.E.R.T.
Okay. Thank you. First question I have is, how many years has Porcelain Patrol been in business?
We've been in business since 1993.
So, if my math is correct, about 18 years?
18 years.
If you're awarded this contract, will the employees working here be full-time employees?
We currently carry mostly full-time employees right now. It really depends on the hours in the building, but most likely, we hire lots of full-time employees, because we do schools, medical facilities. I would say a majority of our staff is full-time. We do have some part-timers as well.
Do the full-time employees receive benefits such as health insurance, eye and dental, vacation, sick time, the normal things that go along with a full-time employee?
We do have some benefits, but when it comes to eye and dental and health insurance, unfortunately, we can't afford to do that at this time. We are looking at different programs. My administrative assistant here could explain some of those programs that we're trying to look at, but those healthcare laws are changing so rapidly in the last two years. We're trying to find avenues that we possibly can to offer some sort of emergency type of insurance, if you will, or catastrophic, but they have changed dramatically in the last two years as well. But we are looking at different services that can help benefit our folks as well. It's not that we don't want to offer those kind of benefits, but the expense is really, really tough in the market that we're in today. You know, in 2005, and 2002, we were offering Blue Cross at that time, but when the economy started to go down in '06 and '07, we took some hits on margins, and margins are tough. We get competition from all over the state on our bids, and bids have come down and margins have come down. So, as a business, you have to, you know, make the cuts where you've got to make cuts.
Previously, when you offered health insurance to your employees, was that paid 100% by you?
It was not paid 100% by us, but out of the, what, 30 employees we had, we had, what, six people that took it?
And who paid for it?
They paid a portion, and we paid a portion. We paid the majority, and then they paid a certain amount.
What about sick and vacation time? Do you offer that to the employees?
We most certainly do. We call them PTO days, paid time off days, because we've kind of gone to that, just PTO days, instead of somebody just calling in.
And what do you call it?
Paid time off.
And for the employees that might be assigned to county buildings, what would the rate of pay be?
That really can vary depending on experience of the employee. I mean, we look at lots of factors, whether or not they have carpet experience, whether they have floor experience from stripping wax, quarry tile, different types of flooring that we run into. We do a multitude of buildings, and we look at everybody's experience and where they've been, but it can range anywhere from the $8 range all the way up to $13.50 or $14 an hour.
And if, for instance, if you were to hire some of the employees that had previously worked in these buildings, what would the rate of pay be?
Again, that would depend on whether during our interview process, what we thought as a committee, because when we interview people, we do it as a team, and then we meet as a team and try to determine that what we think a good offer would be like we would anybody going to apply for any job.
Okay.
Does that conclude your questions, Commissioner Fleese?
Do you have any other comments you'd like to make regarding this?
I can tell you that it's, I understand the sensitive issue that you're all going through. It's not an easy issue. Schools are going through the same thing, and the same type of ordeals right now, and we have several schools that we're currently doing. And what we find is, when we can interview people in the local community, we're providing jobs within that community itself, and we'll try to do the same thing here. There are people out there without jobs that we'll try to employ, and we'll interview anybody that's been on staff and be happy to take a look at all of those folks. I can tell you that in the situations when we're in a small community outside of Traverse City, when we take on a school system, the issue is just as debated as it is right here. There's absolutely no question about it. But sometimes those decisions have to be made. We have companies from Grand Rapids, Detroit, and Flint coming into our territory, and we feel that we are the largest and best cleaning company in Grand Traverse County and in Northwest Michigan. We will bend over backwards to service anybody in our surrounding counties, and that's what we do, and we do it well, and we've been at it a long time, so.
And you're headquartered here in Traverse City?
Right on the corner of Hastings and Parsons. We had, I had bought the old Michigan Milk Producers building right there.
Yep.
Boblun was in there. That's where we're located. We also have a janitorial supply company, full of all equipment, papers, supplies, you know, can liners, chemicals, so we have that company as well.
And you yourself live in this community?
I do. I live at 137 Birchwood, right on Traverse, Traverse City.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Richard, I believe Commissioner Richardson did then. Do you have a lot of problem with employee turnover?
You know, we're like, we're like any business. We've had employees that have been with us 10 years, 12 years, and we also have employees that look at this as a part-time sometimes, until, you know, their situation gets better. But I can tell you that the employees, the base staff that we have, we have experienced probably 20 to 25 people out of the staff that have been with us four or five years or longer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm questioning the --
I'm sorry. I told the floor.
I'm just questioning these questions because he has not been selected as the --
He hasn't been selected as a vendor.
No, but he's been heavily, but he's been heavily recommended by the county administrator.
Yeah, but I think they need to be more generic, if you could.
What?
I think they need to be more generic questions rather than --
Well, no, I, I, I have a curiosity, and I only have one more question, and that is, now, you see you've been in business since 93, so when the economy was growing strong in the mid to late 90s, were you having a harder time hiring employees then than you do right now, for instance?
No, not really, not at all. I mean, because, you know, when the economy is good, obviously, you can pay more and do, do better things as far as, but we weren't that large of a company at that time either, remember. I mean, in 93, I was starting out, and we did what we called, I created a program called restroom shock treatments, and I do believe Herb was in business at that time. I mean, I would travel all the way to Grand Rapids and to clean just restrooms. And I'm actually a retired teacher. I taught for 25 years, pre-chem and pre-physics as well. But I grew up on a farm, and I knew what work was work, and my wife wanted to stay home and raise the boys, so, you know, we worked, built that business. That's what we did.
Commissioner Wheelock. Does that conclude your questions?
Yes, it does.
All right. Commissioner Wheelock?
I guess my comment is very simple. I appreciate you all looking coming, but I do believe these questions as to how they operate their business are inappropriate, and that we have not negotiated a contract. You know, there's a big difference between the bid packet that was sent out and the negotiated contract that has to come to enact the process. You know, if you read the bid packet, it talks about a finalized contract will be negotiated. We haven't gotten to that point, and I don't believe it's appropriate that we have this conversation.
Yeah, and I, and I would have, my intent here was, they provided the county commission with a letter indicating that they had experience in different levels of secure areas, medical files, those kinds of things. So, if anybody had any questions on the letter, particularly, not necessarily, you know, getting into any other greater detail. Commissioner Fleese.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I think Mr. Wheelock and particularly Mr. Lemko, Mr. Lemko's totally out of order. Commissioner Richardson had the floor, and I don't think Commissioner Lemko had any business interrupting him.
You're correct, and I stopped.
I asked if the proprietor of this company would come up and answer questions, to which he replied, "Yes, he would." And I'm sure Joe, he's been in business 18 years, he didn't like the questions, he'd have said, "Well, I'd rather not talk about it." And I didn't hear that out of Joe. I think he answered every question right as full as he could and as honestly as he could, and I'm very satisfied with his answers.
Yeah, and basically, my intent was, if anybody had any questions on the letter that you provided the county. Does that conclude it?
Sure.
Thanks. Thanks for coming up. Appreciate it. And again, it was strictly voluntary on your part to do so, so, thank you.
I'm proud of what you've done, so that's enough.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes the basic information that the administrator has brought to the commission regarding the request that I had. That leads us to item number 33. Yes. You can, you can ask, I will allow you to ask the administrator questions regarding the information he's given the commission. Okay. Sure.
My question is, when you looked over these, we're talking six full-time custodians, and I realize that's two people in the Hall of Justice and then one for each of the other buildings, but right now, prosecuting attorney's office actually doesn't take seven and a half hours to clean, so I'm assuming, I mean, I know why you did it this way, but actually, that would not be a full-time position, and probably, unless you're looking to put two people in some of these other buildings that I'm not aware of, but right now, there's only one. So, I, I thought the numbers are somewhat a little bit skewed, because maybe, maybe one of these other people, if you were to, even to the five, could do. I think it's probably the prosecutor's office takes two or three hours a night, because I know that person works at prosecutors, and then goes down to, I believe, it's Front Street. Something like that.
Well, first of all, I'm not an expert in how we staff this, and I don't think you are either, Midge, but
Well, I know I'm not.
I got this from Janice Lane, a union employee who put this together on behalf of Danny Brown, because he was out of town. They do this every day, so I just basically did what they said the staffing needed to be. So, I don't know whether they need less staff than what's listed here, but if they do, it appears to me that it's still about an $80,000 to $90,000 difference to keep those six employees, so that's really all I can address.
Well, it is 81, you know, with the six.
That's really all I can address, and I don't, you may have better knowledge of how we operate the facility staff and the buildings, but I just based it on what Janice said.
Well, I just wondered about that, because I, you know.
Yeah. That's where I got it from.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on the information provided by the administrator?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Because juror number eight has not been able to be here for our last couple meetings in regard to this discussion, I wondered if Danny had any comments in this regard, because he's, you know, Steve's been --
I'm not giving Dan's due side. I mean, they're here.
Yeah. Mike's been here, but as we all know, Danny's been sitting a jury in Little Rock County, so.
Okay. Okay. We'll take that as you'll pass. All right. We will now move on to item number 32, which was polled by Commissioner Richardson. That is the 2012 budget adoption.
Yeah, this is the adoption of the budget itself. I guess I was a little surprised that the adoption of the budget for the year was a consent calendar item.
Well, every action that's taken, every action that's taken
I know it's taken off.
Every action that's taken by a committee in a recommendation goes under the recommendation of the committee.
I, I understand.
Understanding fully that we expected you would pull it. We're just trying to be technically correct.
Okay. Well, I honestly, I just, I'm not sure how I feel about it. I just felt we ought to have a discussion about it before we passed it out, that's all.
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, it's consistent with the way we do it every year.
Hey, any other comments on that item?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor? Commissioner Gilman?
Move we approve the budget.
Asked presented in the package.
Second.
All right. Second by Commissioner Henshaw. Is there discussion? Commissioner Richardson?
I, I've made a habit of voting for the budgets, and there's a lot in this budget that I do like. I think we've made real progress in a lot of areas, and I think we've made a lot of progress on the health insurance over the last two budget years, and, you know, despite the fact that we are spending less money, generally speaking, I don't think we have, I mean, most, most agencies of county government have done okay. Sheriff's Office in particular did very well, had a rather healthy increase compared to most. And I say that, saying that I think it's a good thing, but this, this, this question about, about the custodians, I know it's like, I'm sure somebody followed commissioners saying, "We don't understand why, you know, why I'm so upset about it," but it's just, it just seems one of those things like, "Well, because we can do this, you know, we should." It's not even, it's not even that there's that much pressure to cut spending, it's just like, we can sort of reach out and, you know, save some money here, so, you know, we should just do it, and, you know, never mind the consequences. If we were having a real severe budget shortfall, if we really were short on cash, hopefully, we'd be having a discussion on the cost of labor top to bottom. I mean, we have 500 employees, so that's a, that's a lot of costs to talk about and a lot of question about whether, whether or not, you know, maybe we offer too many benefits, or we pay people too well, or whatever, or maybe there are real programs we don't need, but just sort of reach out and sort of, you know, take a swipe at, at the lowest-paid employees in the whole county, it just, it just, it just really aggravates me, and because of that, I don't think, I will not be supporting the budget.
All right. We will go with Commissioner Gilman and get Commissioner Henshaw.
I don't think any of us in here discount what your reasons are. I mean, they're people, and they're people with families, and they're people with, you know, who've had jobs for a long time. We unfortunately are tasked at some point to make the tough decisions, and, and maybe not so much this year that it's going to affect this budget so much, but next year, and the projections aren't good. So, we have to make those tough decisions, and I'll tell you, I, there are a couple things, as you, as you well know, that are in this budget I don't like either, and I'm, and at this point, this is my compromise in a way, you know. You know, one way or the other, it's going to be, it's, it's going to be the support staff, or it's going to be officers, or it's going to be somewhere, you know, there's just only so much, the resources are finite, so, so I understand. It's just, and I get it, you know, I mean, I get it, and I understand that it looks like it's picking on the, you know, on those, on those positions, but it's not, it's just a decision.
Commissioner Henshaw?
I do not share your perspective that we're flush with money. You know, my first year as a commissioner, I've been a county commissioner for, well, 10 months this month, it's been October, and I look at a county that has spent more money than it took in for several years in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Just that fact alone tells me that we need to be taking some cuts, and I'll tell you, I seconded the motion to approve this budget, but if I thought I could convince this board to cut more, I would have dug in and shaved some more. This, to me, is somewhat of a compromise, and I agree with Commissioner Gilman that if we could shave some more, we probably would.
Okay. I have a comment if someone else doesn't. Commissioner Wheelock?
Well, I guess my comment is that, you know, this may or may not be a perfect budget, but we went to every department in the county and asked them to identify ways to cut their budgets, and this is what came from facilities. We can't shut the gas off, we can't cut the, how much heat we have, we can't cut the, take, take the lights out, bulbs out of every other light. This is what facilities come back, is this is the way we can cut the money in our budget, in our department, you know. So, when you make the comment that this commission swiped at these people, that's not, not true at all. The fact is, we went to every department in this county from top to bottom and asked them to make cuts in their budget. Tell us how we can cut money in your budget. This was the recommendation that came from facilities, and, and to be honest with you, this is the recommendation came from facilities a year ago, and we went round and around and around and around, and down to the 11th hour, we decided to hold those positions. We, we cut one position, I believe, last year. But we, we had made the commitment to go out to bid this a year ago, and we got right down to the 11th hour, and we decided, "Well, we're going to cut one person, but we're going to retain the rest." Okay? So, here we are, 10 months later, 11 months later, having the exact same discussion. The fact is, two years running, the Facilities Department has been asked to identify ways to cut their budget, and this has been the recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Fleese?
Well, I'll not vote because of the custodial deal in favor of the motion. But you know, I woke up 3 o'clock this morning, in fact, it was 2:55, thinking about this, and normally, things don't bother me, but you know, we're not talking positions, we're talking people and families, and we're going to disrupt 11 families severely, one way or the other. In response to Commissioner Henshaw's comment, we're not flush with money, when I woke up at 2:55 this morning, I thought, here we are, quibbling over about $400,000 in people's lives, and we've got millions in our fund balance, better than 8 million, and yet, this board is willing to cut positions. But I don't think the ones of you that are going to vote yes have thought very seriously, and I don't even know her name. I think I only know maybe one custodian. The lady from Fife Lake, you know, I don't know if she's a single mom with children, but I'm sure there's some single parents there with children, and the state's cutting benefits. Sure, they'll get unemployment, but it's severely going to disrupt their life. I don't know that they can run out and get another job. Obviously, perhaps Porcelain Patrol would be kind enough to hire them, but like that lady, and I keep --
Patrol would be kind enough to hire them, but like that lady, and I keep thinking about that lady, when I came to town this morning to debate a board meeting at nine AM, gas was three dollars and twenty-one cents at Mutual, it was three dollars and sixteen cents at Sam's, and when I headed back home at eleven forty-five, gas was three forty-six. And right away, I thought about the lady from Fife Lake. How is she going to possibly, for lower wages, afford to drive that? And, you know, I don't know of any industries or businesses in Fife Lake that probably could hire her and even come close to what she makes with the county, and she seemed to me like a pretty dedicated employee. She, it was right from her heart she was talking, so I don't like to see the cuts made, but the question I have next year, I don't think things are going to improve significantly, and if the board has the same attitude, we're going to have to cut more, and where are we going to start? Take administrative staff, gone, just bloop, gone. We'll keep Dennis because none of us want to do his job, you know, and that would, that would fall upon us collectively to do his job if we let him go, lady mom. But where are we going to make the cuts? And it's the same scenario. And if we have to absolutely make cuts, when we're getting to where we're out of money, which we're not, I think we need to cut a little bit from everywhere, or we need to look at programs where a small percentage of people are benefiting in the county. We've got eighty-seven thousand residences, and if, I'll pick on the pool, for example. The pool, I think, serves a small percentage of residents in Grand Travis County, but we could save a few bucks there. It's those type of programs, and I'd hate to lose those employees, but at least you're looking at percentages, and there's more common sense to it than what we're doing tonight. So I'll vote no for the motion.
Okay. I guess I have a comment. You know, these, these decisions are very difficult to make, especially when, you know, Sonny and I, and some of us, Dick, have been here for an extended period of time when the county was on a continued growth pattern and revenues were continuing to go up, SEVs were going up, and, you know, we expanded services, we expanded programs, and, you know, when staff came in and said, you know, we need recommendations to move forward with increases in terms of staff to accommodate the higher population levels, you know, those were easy decisions to make, and, you know, we, we, the past board in this, and I can't, and particularly this board, we've done a really, I think, fine job in terms of, of being fiscally conservative, and you may have a different definition of that than I do, but, you know, when I started here nineteen years ago, we didn't have a fund balance, and, you know, we didn't have much of a bond rating, and we didn't have hardly any savings in a capital improvement fund, and the board felt, with the guidance of the past county administrator and our current county administrator, to make some structural changes of how we make decisions on our annual budget, and, you know, we've got now a fully funded, conliqued tax fund where other counties don't have those, they borrow the money. We have a fund balance that meets the expectations of Standard and Poor's, that's why we've got one of the top bond ratings in the state of Michigan of double A, and they report Grand Travis County is having one of the most financially strong counties in the state of Michigan. And we have used our fund balances over the last, past three, four, maybe even five years, because we had the capability of doing so. We were smart enough to take it to the maximum level that the CPAs allowed us to do for this purpose, is that we've never seen a downside, and we've, we've seen it during our lifetime, in two thousand and four, I don't know, I can't remember the date Sonny always has to remind me of, you know, we laid, we cut twenty-two positions or twenty positions, and then we, last year, we cut ten, you know, and we're, and the custodians aren't the only ones that are being looked at this year in terms of reduction in staff and people losses, and the fund balance has been there to help bridge us over the tough times, and we have used it for those purposes, as long as we maintain a certain level of funding in our fund balance, that the market sees us as still viable for our strength in our bond rating, which gives a lower interest rate for loaning, it helps the community out in terms of, of lower interest rates for bonding, going to the county for bonding, especially our partners in the township levels. So, you know, the last three years, the board has made a decision to use part of the fund balance to bridge and keep people here, hoping for a better year. You know, we've been optimistic that way, and it hasn't worked out, and, you know, we've, we're on our final year of that allocation to maintain an eighteen percent expenditure level, so I think we've used the fund balance appropriately, and even though, as Commissioner Henshaw said, we've probably spent more than we've taken in, I think we've properly used the use of the fund balance as it was intended to do, and as the previous boards have intended to do, is to prepare ourselves if there is ever a downturn, that, you know, we're not constantly laying off and then hiring year to year, depending on how things go, that we've got a little bit of a bridge. Next year is going to be a huge challenge, you know, because we have to replace that six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the fund balance we're going to use for operations. Dennis has already reported that Garfield Township has cut three major employers, SEV, by fifty percent. Who knows how much more is in the pipeline for the Tax Tribunal in Lansing? Who knows what's left in the, in the pipeline for lowering assessed values at our local units of government? I see, you know, at a minimum, we're going to be looking at potentially a million dollars in cuts next year. We're going to have to make some tougher decisions next year, but we're taking it year by year, and, you know, I can go to bed at night and feel good that we've extended the fund balance as far as we can go over a period of years to save as many of these employees as we can, as long as we can, and I think we're at a point right now where we're at eighteen percent. My comfort level is not to go below that. I don't want to get into a discussion with Standard and Poor's about the reduction of our bond rating, and, you know, yes, it is hard to lay off people, and it is hard to reduce staff, and we've done that over a period of years, and it's very hurtful, it's tough to do those things, and we've, and by no means are we done. Just as Commissioner Gilman has indicated, and Commissioner Max Bauer in previous meetings has indicated, I think we've got, I think we've got a tougher, we've got a tough time next year in, for the '12 budget, and we're going to have to find some more cuts. So, you know, had it not been for, you know, the fund balance, you know, the custodial thing situation, probably would have occurred earlier. We gave it, in my mind, the longest piece that we can give it, and I hate to say this, but other people are probably going to be looked at next year. You can't cut a million dollars out of, out of a fund, out of an operating budget without having it affect people. So, yeah, it's a tough decision, it's not a pleasant decision, but I think we've acted appropriately in the past and in, and in this year. Commissioner Gilman and Commissioner Wheelock?
I just wanted to add, as far as the, the bond rating and how that helps our community, and it's also, you know, as we've seen with Munson, when they were renegotiating their, their bonds. Also, in a little rain for next year, we've got to, we've got to come to, come to grips with our MERS acceleration, too, which, they're going to speed that up on us, if I'm not mistaken, and, and they compress that time down a couple more years, our payments are going to be bigger, so that adds to the, to the, to the load we're going to carry next year, so.
Okay, Commissioner Wheelock?
Well, as you mentioned a few minutes ago, you know, in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, we cut twenty-two positions. You know, we were fortunate, at that time, we were able to do a number of those by attrition, people that were ready to retire. We, we offered some early retirements that had some people go. You know, there's pros and cons to that program, as we all know, as we look at our retirement balances, but, but the fact is, we, we didn't have to actually issue a lot of pink slips for it. We effectively, you know, for lack of a better term, gutted our sheriff's department. We were very fortunate. We hired well-educated young men to fill those positions, and a few young ladies to fill those positions, and, you know, I told you at the time, for those of you that were here at the time, give these kids a few years, they will be great officers, and we're very fortunate, they are, they are very good officers, and, and this community is blessed to have them, and we're going to have good officers for another ten, fifteen years, but then we're going to be at the same place we were in two thousand and three, when we have all of these officers with a certain level of seniority, and all talking about leaving at the same time, you know, so you have to kind of keep all that in mind. You know, when I, when I talk about, you know, laying off these eleven people, I'm a hundred percent aware that it affects eleven families, but I cannot go to the constituents in my community and say, you know, it doesn't matter that it shows that I can save a half a million dollars of taxpayer money over the next three years by contracting this service because I'm going to save those eleven jobs. The fact is, I can't justify to the taxpayers that I'm willing to spend a half a million dollars of their money to save those eleven jobs. I can't do it.
Okay. Any other discussion before we have a roll call vote? Okay, we have a motion on, I'm sorry, does any member of the public wish to speak on the budget? Thank you for reminding me.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Sandvig, I live at five, six, three Lost Lake Road, Interlochen. I did prepare a statement here, and I'd just like to read it. Half of it's going to be done away with, Dennis provided a lot of information from the other counties, which I also made phone calls, so I won't repeat all that. I am, I am still in opposition of eliminating the entire staff of county custodians and replacing them with a private cleaning service. You've heard from many of our judges, district court administrator, our sheriff, county medical director, who are all in opposition of this privatization proposal for the 2012 budget. What more will it take to persuade the majority of commissioners to vote against this alleged budget-saving measure? It's my opinion that many of you feel it's going to be okay to allow these employees of the private cleaning contractor into our sensitive areas within the county as long as a so-called background check is conducted. This doesn't cut it for me. I'm not sure what level a background check is acceptable to you, as there are many. The amount of information included on a background check depends on a large degree on the sensitivity of the reason for its, for, the reason for which it is conducted. Example, someone who is typically seeking employment at a minimum wage job would not be subject to far fewer requirements than somebody applying for work with the, with the law enforcement agency. However, I want to inform you that background screening has become a highly profitable, multi-billion dollar annual business nationwide. Will this private cleaning company go beyond the normal checking of public criminal records? Is this private cleaning company going to perform their own background checks, or do they contract with one of the hundreds found on the internet today? I think we all know that getting a detailed, in-depth background check by a reputed agency can be a costly affair. There do exist a number of companies providing cheap background checks, however, they may not provide adequate and up-to-the-mark information. Agencies offering the cheapest services usually fail to identify criminals performing such shallow reviews that serious offenders can get absolutely clean reports. Even when these services reveal criminal records, the information obtained is often deficient and untrustworthy. Again, I'm talking about this private contractor with their employees entering our sensitive areas. I'm, I'm against that. I did contact a U.S. Coast Guard air station, spoke with the supply officer. He stated to me, due to security and control issues, they have had a, they have not had a private cleaning company ever do their cleaning, and they do all their janitorial work themselves. I contacted local Traverse City unit DNR office and spoke with the acting area unit manager, Craig, who states they don't contract private cleaning services as they have a single state employee who makes his rounds to clean up their local DNR locations on a daily basis. Antrim County, I'm sure is one of Dennis', what he found out. I spoke to Maintenance Department Supervisor Dave Vitale, who states they do not, and he can't imagine outsourcing for cleaning services in Antrim County. Their employees perform this function. So, to end this, I ask you, please, do not privatize our county custodians for a private cleaning company in our sensitive areas within the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak regarding the 2012 budget? All right, we'll close this side of the public comment, and we have a motion on the floor to move forward with item number thirty-two, the adoption of the 2012 budget, General Appropriation Act. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Please?
No, for the reason I stated earlier, the custodial layoffs.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Thomas?
Because this is my thirty-second year of working on budgets, I'm going to vote for the budget because I've never voted against one, however, I am opposed to doing away with the custodial.
So I vote as a yes.
So that's a vote.
Richardson?
No.
Lemkul?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Because I represent taxpayers, I vote yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Henman?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven, two. All right, that concludes unfinished business. We will now move on to new business, there is none. Do we have second public comment? Anybody in the public wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, we will close the second public comment. We have now moved on to notices and announcements. Commissioner Lemkul?
Yeah, the Brownfield Authority is moving their meeting from the thirtieth to the twenty-third.
Okay. Anyone else have an announcement? Commissioner Gilman?
There was a presentation the other night at the city commission, a special, a special session on the issue of pensions, I think it'd be worth looking at, if anybody's interested in, in watching it and seeing, essentially, it was where the city was at with its pension and its unfunded liabilities. If anybody's interested in watching it, they can get ahold of me, and I can send them a link, they can watch it on YouTube.
All right, thank you. Any other announcements by anyone? Okay, hearing none, we have-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to recognize that the thirteenth Judicial Circuit Court annual report is now out, and, and if somebody would like to get an email copy of it, or whatever, just let the court know, and they will be glad to email it to them. It is an excellent report, it shows the value of what our judges are doing and the programs that they're providing for our community, and I just must compliment them and their administration as to the work that they are doing for the people in our community.
All right, thank you. Any other commissioner notices or announcements? Dennis, do we have a closed session?
No, sir.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Wheelock, seconded by, please, all favor.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, eight fifty PM. We stand adjourned, eight fifty PM.